Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting Tuesday, May 3rd. Our meeting to order. And again, thank you all for coming tonight. And we'll have our invocation by the Reverend Don Ron Cooper, Senior Pastor at Bethel Baptist Church here in Morganton. And after that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance by the students from Drexel Elementary with Principal Shane Mace. I don't know if Shane's here tonight. I think somebody else is here to do that for him. But we'll have the kids from Drexel Elementary here. So everybody would please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge, please.
Let's bow together in prayer. Oh Father, we've come before you and I just want to take this moment and recognize that you are the Almighty, the ever-present God, that you are right here with us. And we want to recognize that you're totally in control. And Father, we look around our world and we've seen you working in power that grabs our attention through devastation. Father, we see countries that are dealing with some terrible situations such as in Japan where the earthquakes and tsunamis hit. And Father, we look in our own country and we look in Alabama where the tornadoes have come through and literally tore towns upside down. And we sometimes think that we're going through a difficult time and we realize as we look around, there's people who are really suffering and don't even know what's tomorrow holds. And so Father, we ask for your grace, we ask for direction. Father, I pray for this board and Lord, each one that addresses it, and for your wisdom, your spirit to fall upon this place and for you to lead God and direct us and there to be a spirit of peace. And Father, a realization that how quickly things can change. And so Father, we, again, we just submit to you. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. Again, Father, I pray for wisdom. I ask, Lord, as our church does every week, that you would bless this board with wisdom and move in a mighty way on their behalf. And Father, our county, just touch Burke County, Lord, as there's many in this county that are hurting. And Father, may every decision tonight that's made bring glory to you. May we honor you above all things, for we ask this now in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Don, you're getting a lot of practice doing this, aren't you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our next order of business is to approve our agenda. That was ready to pick up last Thursday or Friday. I believe everybody should have that and had a chance to look at it. And I'll be happy if there's no changes to the agenda or no additions. I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda that we had received.
Good. Thank you, Bruce. You've all heard the motion by Bruce. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. We have the minutes from the special meeting of April 26, 2011. All board members were present. And then we have minutes from the regular meeting of April 19, 2011. All were present except Commissioner Smith. So let's take them separate. Let's go ahead with the first meeting, the April 26 meeting. And if there was no corrections, deletions, I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve those, that set of minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right. You all heard the motion by Steve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Minutes from the regular meeting of April 19. Steve was not here. And again, I'll be happy to accept a motion if there's no corrections or deletions to those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
All right. You've all heard the motion by Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That passes four with Steve not voting. All right. Our next item is a presentation. And we are honored tonight to have the Firm of Lauter Milk Church and Company here. Well, that will formally present the audit to our board. And you both can come up front and...
Do we need to pull it back a little bit? Do these move? Good evening. Good to see each of you again this year. And we, I think each of you have the audit. You had it maybe a week or so and had an opportunity to look at it. And you also have some highlights that we'll be going over with you. And I'll make a couple of quick comments. And then Rick Hammer, who was in charge of the audit, will go over the highlights with you. And as, as we go through the highlights, if you have a question, stop us. We'll be glad to try to answer it. If we can't answer it, Paul can help us out a little bit. So, but we did finish the audit, sent it to the local government commission. Of course, they have approved it. Of course, what you, is necessary. And we did give you a clean, unqualified opinion, which is what is required. So I'll turn it over to Rick, let him go through the highlights with you. And like I said, we'll, we'll try to answer any questions I have.
Everyone has a copy of the highlight sheet. And the first part is the general fund. And I've got a 2010 column and a 2009 column, just for comparison. The first part there, the general fund, which is your main operating fund, you can see at June 30th, you had cash and investments of just over $18 million. Total assets in the general fund was $24,535.73. And your fund balance in the general fund at the end of June 30th was $16,838,398. Total revenue was $60,706,000. And you had total expenditures of just over $69 million. And then you also had some transfers, transfers and another income of about $7 million. The year, you can see for the year ending June 30th, your fund balance decrease was Included in the revenue numbers above was the ad lib arm taxes you collected for the current year levy was $33,877,694, which 96.66% of the total levy for the current year. And then you also had some investment income included above of about $46,000. The second section is your proprietary funds. This is your water and sewer fund and also your waste collection and disposal funds combined. Cash and investments, just over $3 million at June 30th. Total assets, which includes all your fixed assets for this particular fund, set of funds, was $25,498,337. And your net assets or your equity in that particular set of funds at June 30th was $19, Operating revenues was just under $5.3 million and about $6 million in operating expenditures. And so you ended up decreasing your net assets in those set of funds was $1,124,826. And just some sub-numbers, the accounts receivable included in the assets was $638,843. And then you had about $8,400 in investment income in the revenue numbers. The next big section is all the other funds, major governmental funds of your organization. Cash and investments for all those funds was $3,824,164. You had total assets of just over $6.8 million in all those funds. And your fund balances combined for those funds was $5,821,964. Total revenues, just under $11 million and total expenditures of about $11.7. And then you had some transfer out to the, mainly to the general fund. You transferred out about $6 million out of those funds. So your fund balance decrease there was $6,838,450. And the last couple of lines, cash investments for the government at the end of June was And your net assets under the GASP 34 approach was a deficit of $5,736,700. Second page is the fund balance available percentage that we show each year. You had available fund balance in the general fund to spend was $12,453,43, which was 17.58% of your total expenditure for the year.
Rick, so the last two years out of fund balance, we've decreased that. First year, $751,000, last year, $1,707,000, I guess, right?
Correct, yes.
And our fund balance is at 1758, but we, according to the state average for counties with a population of our size, most of them, the average is about 25%. So we're quite a bit under that.
That's correct.
Other questions for the auditors?
Mr. Chairman, if we could get you to expand a little bit on, I'll see where we went down a little bit, but on your page six of your big sheet, your big book, your, I was wondering why such a big decrease in total assets. 209,57 million, 007, 291. This year, 49,951, about $8 million.
About the total assets for the governmental activities?
Yes. How did we lose, did we lose in value of property or where did that?
No, I think a lot of that was the actual, those governmental activities includes just the, not just the general fund, but includes all those other funds like your COPS grant monies. And you were using that money to fund activities. So your cash decreased as you financed those activities.
It had to do with schools.
Yeah.
Right? Where they borrowed the money and then paid it to the school.
Right. You had two...
Most of that had to do with borrowings for the schools and then paying out the money for that. Wasn't that right, Paul?
That's what the COP.
The COP?
Yeah.
Say that again, I didn't hear.
You had two COPS borrowings, those COP borrowings to build the high schools and then some other projects. And in '09, you had that money on hand, hadn't been spent yet. But then as the schools were built, you sent that money over there for the schools and that decreased your cash. So therefore, your assets went down.
You have the debt.
Right.
What happens is you have the debt, but no asset.
Yep. Okay.
That's what's happening.
And in our budget, we only went down, you know, the difference is only like two, a little less than $2 million. And that was showing eight. So I wanted to know why that...
The general, you're talking about the general fund went down about $2 million. But then the governmental activities includes all the governmental funds, not just the general fund.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions?
I think what that says, we owe too much money.
I'll buy that.
Well, yes, if I may ask one more?
Go ahead, Maynard.
Projecting that through the year, any advice for us as far as, do you, do you see the sales increasing a little bit that's going to help us? Or do you, do you expect this picture to be even worse next year on that total asset dropping even more?
Well, I think most of the money, as far as the COPS money, most of it has been spent out now. So in 2010, so I wouldn't think it would decrease that much based on that. And I'm not sure about the other activities going on, how that would affect it, I'm not sure.
Again, any questions, comments? All right.
There's one other letter that I'm assuming you folks read. It's called the SAS 114 letter, or Statement on Auditing Standards. And basically, we were required to communicate to you if there was any unadjusted items that we didn't make and if they were material or if we had any disputes with management. Of course, we had no disputes. Everything was agreed on that we did. So everything was fine in that area.
Good. Thank you so much. All right. If there's not, not any other questions, we'll go, we need a motion to accept the presentation of the audit as outlined by the accounting firm of Lauter Milk Church.
So moved.
All right. You've heard the motion by Bruce. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item is public addresses to the board. Do we have anybody signed up tonight to speak?
No, sir.
Nobody to speak tonight? Anybody want to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is we have three public hearings tonight and decisions. And the first one is Burke County Planning and Development Request to Rezone One Parcel Land Located at 3271 U.S. Highway 64, Morganton, North Carolina. And Request the Board to Hold a Public Hearing. That's going to be presented by Susan. And that, that building was a garage on 64, an automobile garage and repair business, I believe. And a man wants to go in there and it's a metalworking business and maybe a welding shop.
Thank you, Chairman Ablie and members of the board. As the chairman has already explained, this is a rezoning tonight from general business to light industrial. It had been used previously for a car care center. It's very obviously a commercial structure. The surrounding property is a combination of general business and residential. Immediately adjacent to the property to the east and to the south is a general business zoned property. It is vacant. To the north is residential two zoning. However, it's a Burke County convenience site. And across the street on the west side is a residential three zoning. And there is one residential property located there. However, it's not a densely built up area. It's a fairly low-density area. As the chairman mentioned, the owner of the property intends to lease the property for a machine shop, which will include some retail sales and building supplies. But keep in mind that if it is rezoned to light industrial, any light industrial use could be used on that property. And the property owner and the leasing have been working with Burke Development on this project and will create some jobs for Burke County. As with any rezoning, we always look at our comprehensive land use plan and how it compares with what's recommended in there. Our most recent plan for this area is the 1993 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That plan recommended two things for this area. The first is that it would be an urban transition area. So it recognized that it is on Highway 64. There would be some more intense urban development there in the future. However, the plan did recommend that industrial uses be located along I-40 interchanges in U.S. Highway 70 and recommended residential for this particular area. However, when we're thinking about rezoning, we don't have to be completely consistent with the comprehensive plan. We need to take into account what's reasonable and what's in the public interest. And so I think when looking at this particular property, we want to consider that there is an existing viable commercial structure. We want to make sure that that's continued to be used. It's most likely that this property's not going to be used in the future for residential purposes since it's currently zoned general business and we do have the county convenience site just immediately adjacent to the property. It's really not ideal for residential. It's about three-quarters of an acre, so there's not a whole lot of room for a heavy industrial use there. And when you look at our table of uses, there's not a great difference between general business uses and light industrial uses. So the planning board held a public hearing on this matter last week. No one spoke at the meeting. And the planning board recommended approval of the rezoning by a vote of five to zero. Again, they, they recognize that it's most likely not going to be used for single-family residential. They did not receive any calls or any input from the public in opposition to this. And they recognize that there is a buffer between this property and any residential properties in the area. The property owner is here tonight, as well as representative from BDI. And I would be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing.
And one thing about this business, this gentleman already has quite a few contracts that he's, he's got to get materials out to these people. And he's in a really time, time crunch here. And of course, the landlord is back here, Kenneth Ross, if anybody needs to ask him a question. But, and I think he's going to hire two or three extra people once he gets rolling here. So, I mean, he's already got the contracts. That's the great thing. So, and again, I'll open it up for questions from Susan or, or Ms. Ross.
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Susan, your drawing here that shows the point, seven, seven acres?
Yes.
Does the same person own the land around it?
He does.
Okay. It would, according to our ordinance, if that wanted to be included or if he came back, because you now have a commercial that would be adjacent to that, would that be allowed?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the last part of your question. He could, that, that parcel's not part of the rezoning tonight, but he could come back and request that it be rezoned to something else in the future if he wanted to.
Because it would follow the ordinance next to commercial property.
Right.
That's the only question I have.
Any other questions or comments to Susan? All right. This takes a public hearing. Thank you, Susan. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And does anybody from the audience wish to speak to this issue? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Scott Darnell, Burke Development. Again, the chairman, you know, pointed out, great home-based business, decided to grow. He's got contracts in place. When we started working with the client, we looked at several properties. This one shortly came to the top of his list. It's one of those, it'd been used as a cabinet shop before. However, he's not dealing with wood. He's dealing with metal. It requires rezoning. At that point, the planning staff took it over. It's done a wonderful job. This is part of a process and, you know, a way to get jobs and build them back in use and continue to push these properties forward to a valuable economic asset. So I think it's a great thing for Burke County and, you know, another great opportunity for a small business success. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue on this rezoning? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the commissioners on this issue.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the zoning request, ZMA 2011-01, upon finding reasonable use in existing building in an urban transitional area of Burke County.
Good. Thank you, Steve. You've all heard the motion by Steve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Item two, again, is a public hearing and a decision. BDI requests the Board of Commissioners enter into a grant agreement with Ice River Springs Water Company and/or Ice River Morganton LLC and conduct a public hearing. Scott, again?
Yes, sir. Thank you again. Last night, the, the council of Morganton saw the same, you know, incentive agreement. We'll bring it for you tonight. Ice River, one of our existing companies located off Cathy Road, well, actually, the exit before Cathy Road, excuse me, was looking to expand. Currently, they're looking to add on 117,000 square feet and add 12 additional jobs and machinery related to the growth of the business. The business is involved in the water bottling. They pull the water from aquifers, puts it in bottles, label it for private use, and basically, you know, distributes water throughout the southeast. Investments, a little more than $7 million. That's investment with machinery and the building addition, as well as the creation of 12 jobs. We have recommended with the city of Morganton, a 50% grant based on the net new investment of the machinery in the building addition for a period of three years. Council's prepared the agreements. The company's is very appreciative. And, you know, this is another great example of, you know, seeing job growth and investment based on companies already in Burke County and choosing to reinvest in Burke County and create additional opportunities.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Again, questions or comments to Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is one of those things where we can't expose it yet, but Scott, is there a dollar amount if they meet all their, the criteria of what the county will be given in order to acquire those 12 jobs?
You know, breaking it down per job?
Either way, just what is the top figure we could, maybe a low and high?
Which? You know, the grant at this time, the machinery's ordered, it's coming in. The 50% valuation, it was pretty fair to do this. It's pretty conservative. We kept that evaluation until the building is finished with the tax value being reassessed as well as the actual machinery. You know, that dollar amount is not known. What is known is only 50%. Typically, you know, some of it may go in at face value, some of it may not. But I don't have that exact figure based on where those evaluations are today.
It'd be based on new acquired equipment.
Yes, sir. And that assessment of what value that building is when you add 117,000 square feet onto it.
Other comments, questions? There not being any, again, we'll, thank you, Scott. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody from the audience wish to speak to this issue? I don't think anybody cares to speak to this issue. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the commissioners on item two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve execution of the grant agreement with Ice River Springs Water Company Incorporated and Ice River Springs Morganton LLC as presented and to authorize technical amendments, corrections, or changes to the agreement as reasonably required.
Good. Thank you, Maynard. You've all heard the motion by Maynard. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero. Item three, BDI again requests the Board of Commissioners enter into a grant agreement with Project Michelle and conduct a public hearing. Again, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Project Michelle was under a code name, finalizing the agreements with the company, till we got the exact, you know, amounts, the language by council and the other approvals. At this time, you know, we would like to introduce the actual name of this client. Brian, is it, you make the motion?
You go ahead.
Yeah. Project Michelle is Herman Miller Geiger. It was announced by the Governor Perdue's office last week. It's a new company choosing to purchase the Cox Manufacturing Building upon approval of all incentives in Hildebrand. It was approximately 93,000 square feet. North Carolina has been competing for this project. Though the company was based in Hickory, North Carolina, there's another division owned by Geiger, Herman Miller in Wisconsin. And they've chosen to shut that facility down and relocate those positions to North Carolina. The recipient of those will be the moving of the 24 jobs from Hickory, North Carolina to Hildebrand, as well as 64 more jobs over the next three years to Hildebrand, North Carolina site. The breakdown of the jobs was year one, those 64 jobs will be approximately 40. Year two will be 15. Year three will be nine. A little more complex of a project than we just did with Ice River. And please let me, you know, point that out for the public's review. First of all, the project had come to us late October, early October, excuse me, of 2010. They'd looked at a number of facilities in the Hickory-Alexander area, did not like what they found, and found the Hildebrand facility, which is currently Cox Manufacturing. Cox was really built at the height of the market. It was a wonderful, state-of-the-art, brand-new facility. Was, was very much out of the price range of what the budget for the Geiger-Herman Miller facility was. We did enter in discussions to start the project as a formal project. One of the things that had been promised at that time, due to the competitive nature, was a $128,000 ONENC grant. And that requires Burke County and/or Hildebrand to match that in value for $128,000. Because of the low taxes of Burke County and Hildebrand, the approximate tax value on the buildings, a little more than $11,000 a year. At the time, the previous manager and I had discussed the project. And basically, we would be asking to give away approximately 11 to 12 years of revenue at that time, based on matching the grant by one, the one North Carolina fund. However, the, the cooperation of Carson Fisher Engineers and the rest had found an opportunity throughout this process where a pump station that serves the Hildebrand in eastern part of the county was needing rehabilitation, being rebuilt. It wasn't a situation where we had X number of years left on the life of this pump station. It was on its last leg. Actually, fines were being assessed at some points by Dean or by overflow. And it was one of those situations, the only option Burke County had in terms of generating any assistance from that, for that project, was A, a low-interest loan, and that was it. The only grants pretty much available in today's environment are jobs-related grants. If you create jobs, you get, you know, an opportunity to get grants to help with public infrastructure. infrastructure. That sort of sent off a light bulb. There's been a lot of wonderful coordination to get to today. Like to recognize the county manager and the council for helping to put this deal together. Not every deal has shake their hand and welcome them. Sometimes the best ones are the hardest ones. So, tonight, we'll see not only the addition of a great new corporate citizen of Fortune 1,000 in Burke County, but the commissioner's commitment to further grow the eastern part of the county and make sure our existing companies in that part of the county, you know, have adequate sewer infrastructure to not only grow their facilities, but with no interruption to their daily operation. One of the things was, it was pure negotiation, and it was getting down to the timeline of we had to do something with this pump station. We'd actually had authorized the engineering to begin, and it was putting this deal together. Being the size and the complexity of this, it, of course, took a little longer, but all sides have come together with the following agreement. The first thing, the state is authorized to, on a performance-based, $128,000 ONE NC grant. Burke County would be required to match that. What we've come up with is a variety of different incentives to do this, as well as meet the need of a grant, and with some successful news there. First thing is the company will be invested outside of the building, which is approximately, the sale will be announced here in the near future at closing of escrow of the building. They will invest another $1.5 million. About 1.1 of that is machinery, mostly high-speed routers, and the other 400,000 is additions to the building, whether it's dust collection, numerical control devices, those type things. So, it's a total new investment of $1 million. For this period of three years, we've agreed, for your approval, a 65% reduction based on that net new investment of $1.5 million. Again, some of the equipment may be moved from Wisconsin, some of it may be bought new. At this time, we don't know the actual tax value, so we use the percentage method, and, you know, again, they're adding additions to the building improvements, and that will go forward upon close of escrow on the building. So, that would be a 65% grant based on the net new taxes for a period of only three years. The actual tax value of the building has never been touched. That was never touched in the transaction, which is, we're keeping everything on net new. The second part of the agreement was to have Herman Miller Geiger to participate in their cooperation for us to obtain two grants. The first was with the North Carolina Rural Center on the water and infrastructure side, and the next was the Industrial Development Fund with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, which will be going for their review as it's recharged in September, and the process has already been filed. The positive news last Thursday, the manager received notification, a $512,000 grant for the water sewer project had been awarded by the North Carolina Rural Center. So, 50% of our plans worked. Again, those funds are secured to go forward with that project, and, again, the company's done a very good job participating in those processes and being upheld. As part of their cooperation on us obtaining $1 million in grants, we agreed to a $250,000 performance-based grant to follow the guidelines of the ONE NC grant. And let me, please explain how this would work. The ONE NC grant, every one year after the date of it being signed, is reviewed on the number of jobs created. There's never incentives paid upfront until the jobs are actually created in the state of North Carolina. This grant on $250,000, which follows $3,906.25 per job, will be based on a net year after those jobs are created to be paid, same as with the state. If the company does not create the jobs, none of that $3,906.25 per job would be paid. The argument is, well, you know, why aren't you giving them the money? Well, they wouldn't have participated or bought the building if we didn't, and the only recourse we had was a low-interest loan. The worst thing that could happen, if they did not create the jobs, and as a Fortune 1,000 company, they're financially sound enough to ride out any recession going forward, is we would just revert back to a low-interest loan or no-interest loan or pay the money out. So, council's done a wonderful job, but there's a lot of protections in here for both sides, but it's all totally performance-based. The other qualifications, the jobs as they're being created, the positive things, is creating 40 in one year. Practically both grants, within 16 months, all the clawbacks will be met by both the Rural Center and the Industrial Development Fund if successfully announced in late September. The third part was, you know, dealing with the Fortune 1,000 company. They indirectly benefited, along with every other businesses, for the upgrade of the sewer system or the pump station for the east side of the county. But did they directly benefit? Absolutely, that was a question. Regarding being performance-based, they did feel better with an indemnification agreement, which if they don't create the jobs, they don't receive the incentives, pretty much the same from the state it is the local. So, the indemnification agreement was basically just reinforcing that they will do it, but if they didn't do it, it's a risk back to us, but the risk is guarded by, we don't pay the incentive out until the job is created. So, three agreements. One is the rebate, excuse me, the grant based on 65% of the net new taxes. The performance-based grant of $3,906.25 per job, based on their cooperation on the sewer grant for the sewer lift station, which $512,000 has already been secured by the North Carolina Rural Center. The third part is the indemnification agreement, keeping the performance basis based on job creation with no liability back to the company if that does not occur.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, that may be a question, but just, I think this is one that we've discussed, I don't know, four or five times in closed sessions and have gotten it this far. And speaking personally, I really love those that ties the grant money to the jobs that we're creating, and I believe we're looking somewhere down the road, about 128 employees at that place. And the only other comment I had to make, and Scott, is that when we approve this, will those agreements come back for a second draft approval of the board, or will this will get you all completely past that?
You know, with council's approval, that's the last approval before someone signs. Yeah, I believe they're 99.9% complete. They closed the option on Friday. They would like those, if you choose to pass them tonight, they'd like notification to proceed with their legal team of signing everything, close escrow on the building. Within a month, hopefully close the building, move in, and hold a grand open ceremony for the community. They're ready to move forward. They have notified the facility of closure in Wisconsin. There will be approximately X number, they don't know that, it'll be a low number that possibly will transfer here, but a relocation team locally is already working with the company to help those people make the transition as well.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I know was the real Michelle, come on down.
Any other comments or questions to Scott? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing again for Project Michelle, and anybody wish to speak to this issue tonight? I guess nobody's interested in speaking to this issue, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what is, Brian, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, now that we've been able to go away from the code names, Scott, do you want them to use the actual company name as, or if they make a motion to approve the execution of these documents?
Yes, sir. It'd be Herman Miller Geiger International, and the actual legal names on the agreement, the council has those, but, you know, absolutely, please use the name that will be given by in Hildebrand.
All right, the public hearing is closed, and I'm looking for a motion. Remember, there's about five items to that motion, so I'll be happy to accept a motion.
Chair, I move to approve execution of the following documents related to Herman Miller Geiger International, which will include indemnification agreement, investment grant agreement, job grant, and performance agreement, public facility agreement, and performance agreement, and authorize technical amendment, correction, or changes in the agreement as required.
Good, thank you, Bruce. You've all heard the motion by Bruce. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck with that.
I would like to make sure that they, any correction or things, we'll get a copy of that, it's just information.
All right. All right, thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Our next item of business is a consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian Steen, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have three items in your consent agenda. The first one is the Burke County Tax Office EMS Collections Report for March 2011, followed by the Burke Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Membership Appointment, request to appoint Melissa Streppa to complete the unexpired term of the at-large category with the term expiration of June 30, 2012. The final item is the proclamation for National Day of Prayer. If I could, I'd like to read that to you. The proclamation for National Day of Prayer on May 5, 2011, whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have long, have a long and venerable history in our constitutional republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas the Declaration of Independence, our first statement as Americans of national purpose and identity made the laws of nature and nature's God the foundation of our United States of America, and asserted that people have inalienable rights that are God-given, and whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislatures to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court of the United States Congress themselves began each day with prayer, and whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as a National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faith to join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in Burke County when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our state and nation, and whereas this year's theme is a mighty fortress is our God. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Burke County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5, 2011, to be designated as a day of prayer in Burke County, and encourage the citizens of Burke County to observe the day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance duly proclaimed this third day of May, 2011.
Good, thank you, Brian. Thank you for reading that. All right, any questions for Brian on the consent agenda, the three items? And that would be Thursday, right? The day of prayer is Thursday, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve all three as rendered.
All right, you've heard the motion by Maynard. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Again, that passes five to zero. All right, that takes us down to our items for decision tonight. We have, I believe, six decision items on our agenda, and the first one is Communication Center Consolidation Grant Support and Authorization. I guess John McDevitt was going to be here, but we have Chief Talbert from Morganton, Major Rector, Randy McKinney, our EMS head, and possibly Steve Smith to speak to this issue.
Indeed.
And Mark, you're going to be the one, I guess.
I guess. George Shaw.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Clerk, I'll try to be brief and hopefully enable stand-in for the sheriff. You have before you a resolution seeking support from this body to move forward on a grant opportunity that is being offered by the North Carolina 911 Board. In previous discussions and information we have shared with you, to give you a little bit of background about this, the North Carolina 911 Board has made grant monies, is making grant monies available to consolidate PSAPs, Public Safety Answering Points, or communication centers throughout the state. The current move is on to consolidate these so that the 911 Board is not spending money for all entities to fund their own communication centers. For example, at present, Morganton, Bowdies, and Burke County all spend money and have to get money from the state to support these communication centers. The goal on the North Carolina 911 Board is to come, bring this under one entity or one communication center, if you will, and as a result, they are offering grant money to do this. This is the first time they have offered money that is a zero-match, brick and mortar. In other words, they will build the building for you type opportunity, and we believe the time is right for us to try to move forward on this opportunity. Now, the document before you is a light document of other documents that were passed last night by the town of Bowdies and also the city of Morganton. This is not to say that all the information is clear to us in terms of all the Ts being crossed and the Is being dotted. I received just an email document today from a member of the North Carolina Police Execs Association talking about this new, these new mandates and legislation, so it is still subject to further review and approval. However, we do believe the foundation has been set for where the North Carolina 911 Board is moving with this and what the end result will be. Again, this, I would reiterate, this does not bind us to, should we be fortunate enough to receive the grant, we would not be bound to the grant until we actually take the money and have to put into motion what that project is. However, we do believe, again, the timing is right for us to at least explore this and see where it takes us.
Good, thank you, Mark. Again, questions for Mark? And again, he's got Randy here, Major Rector, and Steve's been involved in that some, so is there any questions for Mark? All right, there's no questions. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we, let's see here, authorize the application for the 911 consolidation grant and approval of the related resolution.
All right, thank you, Steve. You've all heard the motion by Steve. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes five to zero again. Thank you, Major Talbert.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item two, Burke Juvenile Crime Prevention Grant, request to approve funding allocation for FY 212, and we have Debbie Bradley here from JCPC staff. Welcome, Debbie.
Thank you for allowing me to present to you the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council spending plan for next fiscal year. We're asking you to approve the allocation to programs. The North Carolina general statutes do require the Board of Commissioners to approve the allocation to each individual program. The good news with this is we're not asking you for any money because there is no county match required. Our programs do have to give a 30% match, a minimum 30% match, and that percent is different county to county. It's based on population of youth in the county. It's, the JCPC is 100% funded by the state of North Carolina, so depending on what happens with the budget, we may be before you looking at less dollars or maybe more dollars. We just won't know for a while. We have budgeted a reduction from last July 1's numbers because everyone anticipates state cuts. There is one change in the program match numbers from the form you received last week. One of the programs notified me today that they are not going to be receiving some state funding, so they're going to look at another source for some dollars. But there's no change in the allocation, the Department of Judicial Justice allocation. We base our funding and our spending plan on court data for the last three years, and one thing that we do receive is recidivism data on our programs, meaning we receive information that shows the youth that's in a program and their repeat offense data. And the good news in Burke County is we're 10% below the state of North Carolina in that number, so our programs are showing some success with repeat offenders. that number, so our programs are showing some success with repeat offenders. All of our programs this year have been monitored as required by the state and are shown to be in compliance and meeting all their requirements for providing services to youth. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Debbie. The only, being familiar with JCPC, the only thing, you all do a lot of work and the state never gives you enough money. That's still, I've seen that over the years and, you know, but...
We do have to thank our programs because several of them last year ran out of dollars and they continued to serve, and it looks like that will be the case again this year, so we owe a lot of thanks to our programs.
Questions for Debbie? No questions? Go ahead.
Maybe our sole responsibility is just basically to approve the spending.
To approve the Department of Juvenile Justice allocation, the money we receive from the state, that's, that's your responsibility is to approve that. You can change it. One of our counties occasionally has done that, and then we usually end up going back to them with numbers showing how we need to change in the middle of the year, so that's your responsibility.
All right. If there's not any other questions, what's the pleasure of the commissioners on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the recommended JCPC spending plan for years 2011 and 12 as presented.
Good, thank you, Maynard. You've all heard the motion by Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. That again passes five to zero. Thank you, Debbie. Item three, Burke County General Services Request from GDS for Residential Garbage Collection Rate Increase Effective July 1, 2011. I believe this is a very small increase, and this is going to be presented by Carson Fisher, our General Services Director.
Thank you, Chairman Ablie and members of the board. As Chairman Ablie indicated, GDS Republic Services has requested permission from Burke County to raise their residential garbage collection rates this next fiscal year, 19 cents per service location per month. And this rate change is based on the December '09 to December 2010 CPI index of 1.5%. Because of our franchise agreement with GDS for that residential garbage collection, the board would need to approve this, and it would become effective July 1 of this year. Their current rate of garbage collection per location per month is $12.92. If approved by the board effective July 1, it would go to $13.11 per month. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that the board may have. I would like to say that Wade Gosens with Operations Manager for GDS is here tonight also, if you have any questions of him.
Thank you, Carson. Questions for Carson?
Mr. Chairman, on one, Carson, when was the last increase? We discussed this in pre-agenda, but I don't believe we asked that question.
I think we've gotten increases over the last several years. I don't think this year is probably the lowest increase we've gotten recently, but I think we have gotten several increases over the last few years. Is that correct, Wade?
That's correct, and July 1, I believe last year was 2.7. I think the previous year was a zero or 0.1 or something.
And this probably tied to fuel?
Yes, sir. Fuel and petroleum products, tires.
Other questions?
Now, just for clarification, now, this rating increase, is it for all customers or just for Burke County customers?
This request is for Burke County Services. I'm not sure whether you would want to speak to any other counties or not. Do you cover any of the counties?
Our location covers, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our location covers McDowell County and Burke County. We're allowed, we go propose a CPI increase to help cover costs. It actually doesn't reflect our true increase as far as energy and petroleum products have come up, but in general, all our customers across the both counties will be getting it. Some will be larger increase than the 1.5.
And if this is approved tonight, when will your customers be apprised of the rate increase?
They will be going out on the next billing cycle. It'll be notified on the billing.
But it won't start till July?
July 1.
Right, all right. Other questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the board on the rate increase for GDI?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request by GDS to increase the residential garbage collection rate, 19 cents per month per location effective July 1, 2011.
Good, you've all heard the motion by Steve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you all, appreciate it. All right, item number four, Burke Development Request for Consideration Authorization to Execute Red Rock Development Contract, and again, Scott's back at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Project Charlie, which we've been discussing the past couple of meetings, is a project considering the building owned by the county currently at 115 One Sutter Drive in Morganton. It's approximately 100,000 square feet. Because it's a county-owned building, certain things we had to do a little different. One, to pursue the project effectively, we had to have interaction with the client regarding construction-related issues, as well as we had to determine cost upfront prior to proceeding with the project, and that's ongoing still. The proper way to do that under statute was a real estate advisory slash construction management contract. This has been posted. Red Rock and one other firm had been replod. It's an RFQ-based qualification. Red Rock was chosen and tonight would formally ratify that contract going forward. The contract is based on 6% of the total construction cost, and again, if the project chooses not to go forward with One Sutter Drive building, there's really no cost incurred with this type of contract, so it's performance-based, based on the project going forward.
All right, questions for Scott again?
Mr. Chairman, I think in pre-agenda, we had kind of determined the highest amount of money that could be based on, wasn't it 20 couple thousand dollars at the most?
Well, you know, the total project cost with the grants we submitted last, actually it was Monday, May the 2nd, to the Rural Center, the total project cost could be up to $1 million, the total project cost. You know, 6%, that could be 60,000. Until, you know, formal drawings are done, hopefully that cost will go down, but again, it's, there's different parts of that, but, you know, if it's a million-dollar project, it would be 6% of that, be $60,000.
Other comments, questions? Being that, all those, what's your pleasure on this item?
G I move to approve execution of the service contract with Red Rock Developments LLC as presented.
Good, you've all heard the motion by Bruce. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign. That passes again five to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item number five, moving right along here, Burke County Emergency Services Request Authorization for J. Iverson Riddle Center Ambulance Franchise, and I believe Randy Price is going to handle that, but I think they brought out the big guys too today. I see Mr. Art Robarge and Mr. Seth Hunt in the audience, so I think you've got a lot of back up there, Randy.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, commissioners.
In case you can't make it, I think there'll be on both sides of you, hold you up, I guess.
I, as the chairman has mentioned, came to you to present a request from the folks at J. Iverson Riddle Development Center, and as a chairman, so appropriately pointed out, we have Dr. Robarge here and Mr. Seth Hunt representing the center. The essentials of this is that the center itself is requesting to this board for a franchise to operate an ambulance, a category-two type, or category-two convalescent ambulance, to transport the residents of their facility to and from medical appointments within Burke County and outside of Burke County. Riddle is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week state-operated healthcare facility itself, serving citizens with developmental disabilities, as we well know. Some of these residents, however, are non-ambulatory and require special treatment and regular medical attention at sites off-site from the Riddle Development Center. In order to accommodate these patients, in several situations, they have to call for EMS units to come and transport their patients because they are bedridden. This results in an emergency ambulance being tied up for a significant amount of time on calls transporting these patients to and from medical facilities for checkups and routine medical evaluation. Currently, Burke County EMS is providing this transport service, but it does so when it's not busy on emergency calls. As you know, our primary response and primary responsibility is to the citizens of the county for emergencies. Occasionally, this can cause a complication because when we're busy on emergencies, sometimes we don't get to these calls as quickly as possible, requiring them to reschedule and rearrange the transport for a little bit later. The Riddle is suggesting that they would be better able to accommodate these non-emergency calls and thereby their patients' needs if they were granted a franchise to operate their own non-emergency Type II convalescent ambulance out of their facility. This ambulance would only be used for scheduled non-emergency convalescent transports and not equipped nor staffed for emergency transports, and it will not even be used for unstable patients or seemingly unstable patients. If there's any question, they will default to using Burke County EMS to intervene and make the transport. And in these cases, we stand ready to support them and their call for help should they need that on patients who deteriorate during the course of their transport. So what we're asking for tonight is that you guys consider allowing a franchise on a limited basis. Our recommendation is to allow the franchise to operate on a non-emergency Category II concept for a period of one year, on a trial period commencing June 1 of 2011 and ending May 31, 2012, and at such time, it will be reviewed for continuance of operations. And I have an agreement, if anyone needs a copy of it, that we are recommending be utilized. Is everyone, does anyone need a copy to refer to?
Counsel, did you review this for us to, there?
Yes, we sure did.
All right. We're all right?
We are.
And essentially, the contract refers to the state rule and regulatory authority of OEMS, the State Office of Emergency Medical Services, and to our own franchise and specifics along that line.
Brian?
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, since the agenda packet was prepared and sent to you, we've had a request from Seth to change the signature authority for the JR Riddle Development Center to Dr. Robarge instead of him, and I've made that change on the document that we have prepared for signature. And if there's a motion made, I do want to ask one addition to the motion from what you may have in front of you to make sure we cover all the bases.
Well, our copy, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, our copy says draft anyhow. Will we get a final copy of that?
We have that prepared, and I believe these gentlemen are wanting to sign it this evening if it's acceptable by the board.
So our recommendation to you, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is that the board approve the resolution and also the contract for this operation, and that we review it according to stipulations of this resolution.
Other comments?
Just a couple of questions. Randy, I think in pre-agenda, you said probably for this year, we build J. Iverson probably in the amount of $700 for transporting.
That is the potential of 2000, the year that we're referring to was 2010. That was the potential that we build during that time cycle for patients of all, patients of non-emergency categories.
But what will happen here will actually be able to give our other customers better service and probably have a savings in the long run.
That's correct. What this will allow us to do is to make sure that we have emergency ambulances staffed and ready for emergency calls and would allow us to pass this off to their facility for handling of their patients, which they're more capable of doing in some situations.
Other comments, questions?
Is this contract for one year or initially one year?
It is initially for one year and can be re-entered at the end of that timeframe, and at that point, it can be reviewed for any further action the board members want to take at that point.
Seth, Dr. Robarge, is there a problem with just approving it for a one-year contract?
No.
Okay, now, how does this differ from what Broughton Hospital has...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board. In essence, vice-chairman Hawkins, there is no difference. There is no difference.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I'd just like to say the county manager and the emergency services directors accurately presented to you the discussions that we've had over the past couple of months and accurately reflected certainly our intentions and what we intend to do should this be authorized by the Board of Commissioners.
Good, thank you, Seth. All right, any other comments or questions? There not being any, what is the pleasure? Oh, Brian, go.
I was just going to say, if there is a motion to approve this, if you would make the motion to approve the request, the resolution of authorization and related contract for J. Iverson Riddle Development Center to provide the non-emergency Category II convalescent ambulance services for its patients.
Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be proper to do that as an A and a B part of that, if I might make the motion. Motion to approve the A part of it, resolution of authorization. The B part, approve the related contract for J. Iverson Riddle as corrected with the name signage. Development Center to approve non-emergency Category II convalescent ambulance service for its patients.
All right, you've heard the motion by Maynard, and that's in two parts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. That passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Seth and Art, when I said you were the big guys, I didn't mean big guys, like, you know, big guys. I meant, I meant big guys like in your job, you know, big guys at your job. I don't, I don't want you calling me up tomorrow and saying, Wade...
Thank you all.
You understand, all right.
Thank you, chairman.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, if the clerk has those documents prepared, we can let the doctor sign the documents, and then I'll take care of the rest and get that back to you in the next day or two, and we can make copies for our board members if they'd like that.
All right. And you're going to come up and get the clerk to do that, and we'll go on to item six, provision for county health insurance to county-elected officials, presented by Commissioner Steve Smith.
Yes, this is a provision that I've been looking at for the last year or so and bringing for the board, is to try to equalize the two employees we have with the county that are not covered unless they are elected. We have two elected county officials, the Register of Deeds and the Sheriff. And what I'm proposing to do, and since most of the, the Register of Deeds has served more than the time allotted for health insurance to be covered, the Sheriff has served his time, but his has been split between the city of Morganton and the task force and the Burke County, as a deputy and also as sheriff, so, but he would not be eligible for full insurance coverage if he retired this date. And since he is retiring the 1st of June, that's why we're, I wanted to get this proposed. And what this would do is, what I'm proposing is to do in this, is to treat all elected officials that retire from an elected position in Burke County and that have at least 30 years of government service, local government service, and have also at least three terms of elected position from that which they retire, that they be treated as a 25-year county employee with full coverage insurance.
All right, Steve, thank you for presenting that. Questions for Steve, I guess. And first thing, JR, did you have time to look into that?
Absolutely, I did, and it definitely can be done since we are doing it for these two positions and not for individuals. The Sheriff sort of threw a wrinkle into it when he announced his retirement, but since we had discussed it... but since we had discussed it prior to his announcement and we're passing it prior to his retirement, there shouldn't be a problem with this affecting all sheriffs from here on out, beginning with Sheriff McDida, and all Register of Deeds from here on out, beginning with Ms. Cooper.
Good, thank you, JR. All right, other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd asked several questions at the pre-agenda, and I don't believe we have them answered. I think one of them was how much would his retirement pay be? My understanding, all that, or, excuse me, that seventy-five percent of the payment is made anyhow. And also, I think I asked what was his salary, his retirement salary, since he draws double retirement.
Good afternoon, good evening, hello. Actually, one of the questions we cannot answer as far as the retirement benefits go, that's not considered public knowledge because it's offered to the North Carolina local government retirement system, which is not public knowledge from us. So we can't share that. We could have estimates, but we'd have to actually ask the sheriff and/or the Register of Deeds for that information as far as that's concerned. And what was your other question?
How much the actual cost would be to the county in dollars and cents?
Basically, sixteen hundred dollars a year additional cost. He qualifies, yeah, he qualifies for seventy-five percent coverage right now under our current policy.
And I think we have identified that no other county is doing this?
We polled several counties, and the ones that we polled, nobody was offering additional coverage for elected officials or different than what was offered to the county employees.
And then why would we be a lone county and offer this as an entitlement? Folks, I wouldn't vote for this myself. I mean, I'm just, I'm sorry, it's just, it's one of those entitlements that's what's wrong with America today. We pay for so many employees that are no longer productive to that company or to the entity that they're from. And somebody says, well, that's not much money, but when you multiply that by a lot. And the thing that concerns me, you know, people I deal with that's drawing less than seven, eight hundred dollars a month trying to live with, paying taxes to pay to somebody who's going to be drawing thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, what, who knows? I think it just, it is abusement of the taxpayer to do this and to start this. And then the other question is, you know, for us who will have twenty years of elected service, that we don't really get, we get a little bit of pay, but we don't get pay paid. You know, what does that do to you? And I think, I think it's just so unfair, unfair to the citizens. And, you know, we could argue the emotional side of it. But my point is, this is the financial side of it. It's just not a wise move for Burke County or for any county. And as I said, if it's my own brother, if it was Maynard Taylor himself, I would not burden the taxpayers with that tax we pay.
I do, I do take offense to saying it's a productive citizen. He might not be working any longer, but he, just the sheriff itself and Libby both, the two elected officials now have over-served over thirty years both in government service and dedicated their lives to it and given up a lot in the meantime. I think we're, and we're one of the lower-paid counties, almost shamefully underpaid compared to other counties around here. So I think this is the least we can probably do for our elected officials if they stay in office that long.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
So now, to be eligible for this insurance coverage to be paid for by the county, they would have to be elected for three terms.
At least twelve years in an elected office, yes, and retire from that office.
Would this coverage stop when he attained sixty-five?
The same as any other county employee, yes.
It, it does what, Johnny, what was your?
It stops at, when he reaches sixty-five.
How old is he now?
Guess he'll be going on Medicare and Social Security, right?
And his age now?
I think it would take approximately ten years for him to reach that.
You know, it's, I look at this as encouraging other people, other qualified citizens here in Burke County to run for an elective office. Too often, you know, in my opinion, we have people to run for elected offices that's not qualified. And this would certainly encourage those people that are really qualified to run for these offices to do so. And I think for a man that has spent thirty years in law enforcement and only the county assumes fifteen hundred dollars a year, I just don't see why we should. I would encourage this board to do so just for the position.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, you've all heard them. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. You know, I'm looking at this board, and we're having a hard time saying no to people who want more money. And we're telling people not to spend more money, and we're going out and creating really way out in time of things to spend this money. I think it is a terrible precedent for this board in this time advising departments not to spend any more money, and we're leading the way. It's just, it's just bad. It's as though we talk out of both sides of our mouth.
I understand what my distinguished colleague is talking about, but again, I put on a badge forty-two years ago of Valdez Police Department. I don't consider my too sad.
Give me.
Okay.
God is talking.
Okay, again, like I say, I put on a badge forty-two years ago of Valdez Police Department. My insurance is going to be paid for me to the day I die. And I, I respect what you're saying, but I don't consider that an entitlement. I've devoted my entire life to public service. Valdez Police Department, Hickory Police Department, Burke County Sheriff's Department, Assistant Clerk of Court, North Carolina Department of Correction. I just don't consider that an entitlement for me. This is a personal thing for me. And I'm sorry that all of us as taxpayers are going to have to pay that for me until the day I die. But me and my wife, both as state employees, and that's, that's what that is. To me, it was part of a package that was offered to me when I came to work. And like I say, our salaries have not been that great. But I think that was just one of the things that we need to take care of. City employees, county employees, and state employees.
And we have. You know, I get a little bit frustrated when an entitlement program's called a non-entitlement program, when an entitlement def, by definition, is continuing pay without obligations to work. But we could argue that point all night. I get a little frustrated when people campaign, take a job, and I'm not talking about sheriffs, I'm talking about any, and the minute you get elected, you go to complaining because you got that job. So, you know, if you, if you want to be a sheriff, or if you want to be a county commissioner, you run for the position. And it comes with what it is, it's the job. But I think it's a sad omen for Burke County.
The motion on the floor, Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, is to fund the two people we have and future people that serve how, is it twelve?
It's, okay.
Last part, second session there.
As Steve recommended that the elected positions, we have two of those, the Register of Deeds and the Sheriff, that their insurance be medically insured, be assumed by the county if they have at least twelve years and has thirty or more years of credible service in the North Carolina local government retirement system.
All right, and that, and that would be sixteen hundred, in his case, sixteen hundred dollars a year.
That's not a big problem, it's twenty-five percent of the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to butt it.
Yeah, no.
You're correct.
That's correct, all right. All right, you've all heard the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes four to one. All right, that concludes our agenda tonight for our decision items. Our next item is comments and reports from board members and staff, and we'll start down there with Doris tonight.
No comment tonight, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, Johnny?
I just want to encourage everyone to be at Burke County Courthouse, I believe, for the Day of Prayer. That's what it's going to be this year. There was a small crowd last year, and I really hope that we can make it. We, we should be proud Americans this week especially. And I think we all, we all need to have that Day of Prayer and give thanks for what we do have.
Steve?
No comments tonight.
I just asked for, you know, continued prayers for the family of Ron LaSalle, who passed on this weekend, just because he contributed a lot to Burke County. Stay here as the CEO of Hospice. He was actively involved in a number of organizations, and we're truly going to miss one. He was one of the most courageous people that I've had contact with. So I ask that you remember his family.
Bruce, and I echo that. I didn't see anything in the paper on arrangements.
It was announced today at our Rotary Club, one of the Rotarian and a member of the Valdez Rotary Club. They're going to have a memorial service Monday, two o'clock PM at the Waldency Presbyterian Church in Valdez.
All right, good, thank you. And again, I, I'm just like Johnny, I think we're proud to be Americans this week. And just to, again, prayer is an important part of this whole thing. And just encourage people to pray for this commission. As the minister that was here tonight, they pray every Wednesday night for the school board and county commission. And, you know, we just ask you to keep, keep us in your prayers, and thank you for that. Brian?
Yes, sir, I have a few things. I want to make you aware that I have received some contact from the chairman of the Democratic Party. They should be providing me with a letter regarding the appointment to fill the current sheriff's position by May thirteenth. That means I will not have it available to put into your agenda packet for action on maybe the nineteenth, when we have a regular meeting. So one, seventeenth, I'm sorry, I wanted to make you aware of that. Also, the clerk is needing you to indicate to her if you're interested in going to the County Assembly Day on May twenty-fifth at the legislature in Raleigh. I believe you would need to let her know that a day or two prior to May eighteenth because the fee is zero for you if you do that before May eighteenth. So that's, that's a price that we can afford for you. And also, I know that there had been a matter, a question about our broadcast of the meetings in the county on Tom Warner. And I know that Scott, I asked him to look into that, and he contacted Chad. And I placed a copy of that memo in your mail file. There was unfortunate miscommunications about who was doing what and when. I think this has been corrected, and we're moving forward. And Scott is also working, I guess it's like trying to read Chinese backward when you try to figure out how to do something with a firewall to livestream our meetings on the internet. And he's trying to get closer and closer to that so that hopefully anybody with an internet connection and the appropriate speed broadband could, could watch our meetings live when we get that done. So I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Brian. Maynard?
Yes, sir, I'd like to wish all the mothers of not only Burke County but everywhere a happy Mother's Day. And I would also add, if you're fortunate enough to have one living, do something nice for her. I also would echo your sentiments about the Day of Prayer. I think it is important, and I hope that we all observe it in one manner or the other.
JR?
No, no comments.
All right, we will have a closed session tonight pursuant to NCGS 143-31811A3456 for Legal, Economic Development, Property Acquisition, Personal Matters. A motion to go into closed session after we take a ten-minute break.
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had some, I'm sorry, we had some announcements down there, Doris. We had, I see those now, we had three announcements, vacancy announcements.
That's okay, I was moving on. Tonight, we have vacancies in Burke County Criminal Justice Partnership Advisory Board. They would need someone in the vocational rehabilitation or employment services area for a three-year term. The Nursing Home Advisory Committee has three vacancies. And the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee is being restructured, and they need applications for eight appointments in that committee. That's it.
All right. And again, a motion to go into a closed session after a ten-minute break.
So move.
All right, all those in favor, please stand up and take our break. We're now in closed session. Come out of closed session, we're back in open session. We have one item of business, and I'll need a motion for that item of business.
And Mr. Chair, I move to that we allow our county manager to employ to fill an IT position at five hundred dollars more annually than policy allows.
That'll be fine. Current policy. All right, you've all heard the motion by Bruce. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, that passes five to zero. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, have a safe trip home.